All right, it is four o'clock and we will call the workshop for City Council and Planning and Zoning to order.
I'm good with that. P&amp;Z called hard four o'clock on the workshop.
All right, thank you all for being here and hope you all got wet and I hope it's still raining out there. A couple of housekeeping things, we're not going to do public comments now and the reason is we're going to have a presentation and hopefully the presentation will answer a lot of the questions before everybody gets up to speak. Now, and we also do need to let you know, we have another five o'clock workshop, so we will be up against that. So after we've got some presentation and P&amp;Z and Council has had a chance to ask some more questions and clarify things, then hopefully we'll have some time to open it up to the public. Just remember, this is not the end of everything. We still have time to work out details and talk about things, so if for some reason you don't get to speak tonight or you don't get to say what something else that you would like to say, just remember, there will be more times in the future. So we're after information tonight and good stuff, so take it away. Whoever's going to take it away.
Go ahead Drew.
We are coming back from the previous joint workshop to look at some of the discussion that Council and P&amp;Z had, kind of answer some of those questions and provide a little direction from the staff perspective. As your agenda says, we'll go through a little discussion on the conditional use permits. I think we're familiar with where those set through the Planning and Zoning Commission and onto City Council. No direct changes to that right now. Cover the definition, talk about land use table and separation and density requirements.
Mayor, before we continue, can I ask, do we have an electronic or paper copy for us that can't see the screen?
You do not. Um.
I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you Roman, I didn't catch that.
That's okay.
I'm used to the monitors being there, so sorry about that.
Well, no, we can't share too much.
No, we can't really pick these up.
Okay.
Again, a short-term rental, same definition that we've had, as amended in 2020. The short-term rental is residential property, architecturally designed to look like single family for short-term lodging of the maximum of 10 occupants. We've referenced districts where those short-term rentals are allowed by right and districts where they require the short or the conditional use permit. So allowed by right zoning districts would be RT, R3, DAC, and MU or mixed use. And conditional use permit zoning districts, residential estate RE, single-family residential R1, single-family with accessory dwelling unit R1A, medium-density R2, and residential mix RM. So some of the potential amendments that we've looked at and kind of have a little some more detail on coming through, we could add a separation requirement for those residential districts that currently require a conditional use permit, RE, R1, R1A, R2, and RM.
RM, remind me what that, what that, I know where's the mix, but what is that?
Residential mix is R2, so your single-family duplex townhomes and also includes manufactured homes and manufactured home parks.
Okay, thank you.
What do you mean by separation requirement? What do you mean?
Distance?
Distance between. Distance between short-term rental units.
Okay.
So we'll have some exhibits to explain that a little further. We could look at adding a separation requirement for all short-term rentals and we could go as far as prohibiting short-term rentals in those, again, the CUP districts that we currently look at, RE, R1, R1A, R2, and RM, or removing them from all residential districts, which would allow short-term rentals only in downtown arts and culture district and the mixed-use district.
Okay, thank you.
And so we'll go through some of these in a little more detail and if we need to come back, we certainly can. So from the land use table standpoint, for comparison, you have the land use table at the top with no changes. That's how it currently is today. If we were to remove the conditional use permit for the, or prohibit them, excuse me, for R1, R1A, and RE, those are your single-family districts, and then the question would then be, what do we do with R2 and RM? Are those also prohibited or would they continue to be conditional use permit required?
So Drew, just for clarity here, if it has a C in the table, it means its conditional use permit is required. If it has a P, that means it's permitted by right.
And if it has nothing, it's not ever permitted.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. And then the last one on the screen is obviously removing them from all residential districts, allowing them only in downtown arts and culture district and the mixed-use Looking at some of this, we looked at two different methods of separation that we heard from the Council and Commission the last meeting, one by a percentage of block face and one by just a separation distance or a radius from that property to the next adjacent property. So for example, San Antonio limits 12 and a half percent of the block face. Again, block face is defined as shown in the picture, the lots on one side of the street between your cross streets. And so obviously the example here, you've got five homes on that one block face, you would then have five homes across the street on that block if it were a standard block. Obviously our block range changes from a small block like this example to some that have 20 and 30 lots on the block because there's no intersecting streets.
Well Drew, what you're saying there is if you, a typical residential neighborhood can have seven or eight houses on each side of the street, so that's 14 houses for the block face?
No, it'd be seven, seven or eight per block face and then this, across the street would be a separate block.
Okay, so in essence, if you put percentage, let's say you put 12 and a half percent, basically you could have one more or less on each side of the street.
That's correct. And then your larger block, you'd start seeing multiples, of course. This does limit the overall density that we talked about. It would not limit adjacency, so a large block, you could have two next door to each other.
Or sandwiched in between.
Or one single-family home with a short-term rental on either side. It would not limit units from being across the street from one another or back-to-back from one another, because it is just talking about that one block face. From the staff perspective, this would be a little more difficult to convey to the customer. It's case-by-case, every block, having to really go through and count, do those simple calculations, but for something for an investor to anticipate, it definitely gets complicated. And then we would have to define whether we're talking about per lot, per linear foot, do we round up, do we round down, and so on.
So I can understand the math. In the example, the block face is five, five properties.
Right.
If we were to apply San Antonio's limit of 12.5% of the block face, there could be no.
Right.
Does that, each house, each property would be 20% of that block face.
Right.
That would be part of what we need to draft is, does that automatically round up to allow one or is it 12 and a half percent or none, in which case this example would not have any.
Got you. But in the block face, it's just on your side of the street, it's not the opposite side.
That's correct. So this would not be the preference from the staff perspective, just because it does get complicated very quickly. It does limit the overall density, but it doesn't answer the question of the adjacency and it is a little more difficult, because it is so case-by-case to explain to our customers.
It's pretty hard to administer.
Right. Looking at, and I'll pull up a map here in just a moment, looking at the separation distance, you guys are all familiar with the buffer or the notification area that we provide for planning cases. That's a 200-foot radius from the property line. Using that as kind of a similar fashion, we want to look at 200 feet, 500 feet, 1,000, 2,000, what's that number that helps to mitigate the negative impacts on the neighborhood and the adjacent properties? So we've got some maps to kind of help show that. And then the question will be, do we want to apply a separation requirement to all short-term rental units or just the ones in the residential districts? And let me hold off on that. Martin, can you go ahead and switch to the map for me? Bear with me, the mouse is a little jumpy, but we'll, I'll kind of show you some areas and what this separation requirement starts to look like.
So Drew, if you could just zoom out again real quick, I just want to, so this was done in partnership with Development Services and our GIS department. Basically what we did is we uploaded all of the current data for all of the existing short-term rentals that we're aware of within the city limit and the ETJ area. And that's utilizing, again, that scrape software that we utilize to look through all the different software programs, Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, and then the contacts that we've made and then the existing conditional use permits that have been issued. This also has the pending ones that are basically through the next two months.
Through P&amp;Z and Council through Ju-, through July.
Right, so if they have an existing application that's gone in, those are also uploaded within here, but we can cut this data in a number of ways on the fly to be able to provide you guys kind of the look of which ones are in which zoning districts, which ones are in the ETJ versus the city limits, et cetera, et cetera. But it's a pretty, it's a pretty slick tool and kudos to staff for being able to put this together to be able to show you all today.
That, that's a really good point. Statistically speaking, majority of our short-term rentals in Curville, would you say, are R1?
Looks like R1 and R1As.
Right.
Yeah. Again, this mouse is a little jumpy, R1 and R1A, as you can see there, I can't read that percentage from here, but that is the majority of them.
Okay.
That kind of olive green color is R2. So if you look at the three primary residential districts, take out more than 75% of the short-term rental units. And with this dashboard, as Mr. Hoppy mentioned, we can kind of click through some of these. So for example, the ones that are going to show up with red are the conditional use permits and actually click and isolate those on the map. And really look through the R1 districts, now those are kind of hard to see, but that's the ones that, the dots you see on the map there are the only ones that are R1.
Wow, that is, that's cool. Good job guys.
Our GIS department did a phenomenal job. So I'll just zoom into one area of town just so we can kind of see some of the separation.
The yellows, Drew, are, there's.
So the, the color around the property, the perimeter that you're seeing, is the STR by type, whether it's.
It's pending.
Okay.
Yellow is pending, red is conditional use permit, purple is grandfathered, and blue is by right.
Okay.
So you're, you're going to show us a cool tool where you can draw the line from one to the next?
Yes. So we'll start with, I think I did that right.
Oh, oh my gosh.
There's a 200-foot buffer on those properties there. So if, if a customer came in, we pull up their address, if they're within one of those bubbles, they would not be eligible at that location.
Can you zoom in a little bit about how many homes might be? And that's a 200-foot?
That's a 200 feet.
Okay, so you can kind of see where all the parcels are.
Can you take, can you take that out to like 500 feet?
Sure can. So that, that leaves the 200-foot on for comparison and you can see what a 500-foot buffer does.
Really not that much separation.
It's a lot, actually, I think. If you get close to the parcels themselves, like if you zoom, will you zoom in?
So your, your average parcel, especially in kind of your central part of town, is going to be a 50-foot lot. So 500 feet would be, your average blocks, as you think of some of the older parts of town, are about 400 to 500-foot blocks. So that would start limiting one per block. Let me zoom into kind of a different area and see how some of the blocks line up. So here's one that was recently approved.
And that green line is the 200 or the 500?
Green is 200.
Green is two, blue is five?
Blue is 500.
In essence, if you did, if you did a 200-foot buffer, you could have every fourth house could be a short-term rental.
Right.
You could have a short-term rental, you could have three houses, you could have a short-term.
Every fifth house, but.
Yeah, but still, that's pretty close.
And obviously you get to a larger lot, that starts to change the percentage there. And then just as comparison, there's the 1,000 feet, let me zoom out so we can actually see what that does. And I'll go ahead and turn on 2,000. Maybe. There we go. And so you can start to see how much, that kind of dark gray line is your city limits. That would be fairly restrictive to any of the, any futures, obviously.
So anywhere that you don't have a complete circle by itself, there's, there would be right now, if as it is, it would be not allowed.
Not quite. Let me get back to 500 feet.
Because like if, yeah.
Just as an example here, obviously you can see those buffers overlap. What you can't see is the full outline of the circle. These two are more than 500 feet apart.
Okay.
So the, the parcel could not be in the next buffer, but the buffer could overlap each other.
Okay, all right.
I, I think this one was right at.
Would still be okay.
560, 570 feet. So kind of, as you can see in that, for that neighborhood, they're kind of at either end of the block, or I guess one kind of mid-block, one at the end. And the rest, for, most of the rest of that neighborhood would not be eligible.
So would you say most of the R1 and R1A lots are 50 feet plus or minus?
I'd say 50 to 70 is probably.
50 to 70 feet.
Covers most of, most of town.
Which is where the majority of these are, because that's where they are.
Any questions there while I've got this up?
I do have a question. Do you think having buffers at whatever number would tend to force STRs into zones where they have it by right? Would it suddenly become economically more viable to have it in zones where you could have an STR by right? Do you think it would push people in that direction? What's, what's the policy goal here?
I think if, if that were the goal, I think that the other question that we asked through the PowerPoint was, do we want to require the separation distance for all short-term rentals or just the residential districts? So by right, and when of course RT kind of mixes in the middle there, by right, they can do them in RT, R3, which is your multifamily district, downtown arts and culture and mixed use. If those four districts did not require a separation, then I think it would drive them in that direction, because that would be.
It would be driven by zoning and not by.
At least a combination of zoning and the separation. But then you're still protecting the other residential districts, the lower-density residential districts, by keeping a separation requirement so that they're not as dense within one neighborhood.
Well, I mean also, I mean, a, a big driving factor for all this is going to be economics, because the pricing of the homes that you're going to purchase is going to dictate whether you can probably do a, a short-term rental.
Right.
So those neighborhoods are targeted more than, like a multifamily or a, you know, I mean, a residential transitional, I think is probably not a big focus for us.
And the, and the residential.
In the downtown area, I think, I mean, I think that would be, I don't know that you need buffers in downtown area, I don't know, but.
And those are already commercial areas.
Right.
Or at least RT is a combination of residential and commercial. Downtown, obviously, is a commercial, allowing residential, same as the mixed use. And then R3, you're looking at apartments or condominiums, which, again, much different than the single-family environment.
Correct.
Drew, if I'm recalling correctly, I think we had eight units, is that right, that were in the by-right.
See if I can.
Areas currently.
Just a second, let's see if this thing will come in there. Roman, can you see what that says?
RT.
Does that say four right there?
Yep. And then mixed use three.
Three, yes. So seven, seven of the 91 are by right.
Which tells the economics of those areas don't really line up with the short-term rental. Cost of the real estate is probably more.
I want to ask about this tool that you're using. Is it available to the public?
Can be.
We haven't made it public facing yet, but I think as we, we got direction from this body to begin to look at the potential for a licensing type program. And so if we move in that direction, then this would be something that could potentially be available, particularly.
Show it have a property owner.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If it was in fact adopted, that we had buffers, whatever that number is.
That's right. As well as adjacent neighbors, so they know where their active, active STRs.
And future purchasers knowing if they want to be in an area where there's a substantial amount of short-term rentals.
That's right, that's right.
Again, short-term rentals are not the enemy here. We're trying to, we are charged to protect neighborhoods and I understand some of the economics of short-term rentals. I applaud those people for making investments in properties that would probably not be approved. We have to balance that with neighborhoods that are feeling threatened by this change. I have this map, tell them, great job.
You did a, you did a super job.
Any other questions on the map while I've got it up? Martin, can you go back to the PowerPoint? Let me back up a couple of slides here and just to. So again, kind of starting with the more extreme change, prohibiting short-term rental in all district, or all residential districts, focusing only on downtown arts and culture and mixed use. The existing ones, three are in mixed-use zoning districts. So that's kind of where, where the current ones are, we're obviously in the residential districts. Moving up, prohibiting them in the, what are currently the conditional use permit districts, RE, R1, R1A, R2, and RM. So that would leave RT, R3, downtown, and mixed use for those four districts. Add the separation requirement for all short-term rentals, and I think at that point, I don't know that we would need the conditional use permit, because I think we've answered a lot of what those conditions and discussions have been. Or just add the separation requirement for those residential districts or the CUP districts currently. Remove the CUP requirement, so it's one less step through the, through the process, but providing that buffer district between the RE, R1, R1A, R2, and RM.
Can I ask a question?
You don't have to ask, please.
Well, this is more for, for the, the two bodies that are here. Do y'all think that there is, if we do decide we want to do a, a buffer zone, there's a reason that we would still want to have the CUP? Is there any reason that we want to have it or just get rid of it? Are there any extenuating circumstances that may make us want to consider it or just? I'm okay with, with not having to consider it, I'm just wanting to make sure we consider any.
My thought would be, if you remove the buffer zone and add a licensing component to this where they have to renew their licenses and that property has to be looked at, because even though it's permitted in a CUP, it still has to provide parking requirements and it still has to meet certain requirements. And I'm with you, as long as that's done, when you're in an area where you're allowed to do a CUP, you're allowed to do an STR, and they come to you guys and they want to make an application, and part of that process is you go out and look at it, you make sure that they provide the parking and whatever else you're required. I personally see no reason to keep the CUP in there.
Yeah, so I was asking the question of like, is there anything that I'm not thinking of?
And I guess to further that, like an ever-two-year renewal of a license or something
like that where it has to be re-inspected, as long as we're doing that, I agree with Kim.
And to further that discussion, the conditions that we've used for most of the CUPs, we would incorporate that into the requirements.
Right.
So those have been fairly consistent. We've added a couple over the years, the last two or three years, but taking those, putting those in the code as a requirement.
Yeah, one of the benefits of that is when then we wouldn't need P&amp;Z anymore.
You've got some class you got to learn. Your life would just get easier.
Yes, it would.
You say here, meetings when you're.
All right, other thoughts?
I agree with you, I think that's.
I'm still trying to catch up to speed, I'm the new, new kid. You've already answered this question. What is RM again?
It's the residential mix zoning district, so it's basically R2 that also allows for manufactured home subdivisions and manufactured home parks.
I have one, and perhaps this doesn't really apply, but a few years ago, the city allowed recovery houses and put a separation distance, as I recall, and I was just wondering how that's worked out. Is there any information on what we've done with recoveries that can be applied here?
The separation distance for the recovery homes or the boarding homes is based on state law, because there's also a state law separation requirement for those now. Obviously that separation is, except for the ones that were grandfathered before we implemented those rules, of course, has kept those from having any kind of density or located in one apartment.
What is that separation?
Do you remember?
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile?
One of the things that, no matter what we do, I think, is people that don't want the short-term rentals in their neighborhood, they're not going to be concerned about a buffer zone, because if there's a short-term rental coming in next door to them, they're not going to be happy about it. So, I mean, I guess that's something we need to think about as well, because residential neighborhoods are residential neighborhoods, they didn't buy a house there to have short-term rentals in the neighborhood. What, right, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, and again, that if you look at the neighborhoods that get targeted, as we've talked about before, it's an economic issue. If you're going to pay $400,000 for a property, you're probably not going to buy it to use as a short-term rental. Kim might know more than I do about that, but if you're going to pay $200,000 for it, then it's economic, it's feasible. So again, we're looking at these neighborhoods that are going to bear the brunt of the short-term rentals because of economics.
He's slightly devil's advocate, I, I still think buffers might be a useful tool. I'm still up for the buffer.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I think buffers are good, but again, I don't, you know, the buffer's great and it limit, it limits the number, but it doesn't change the issue that the, that the residents have with having the short-term rental in their neighborhood when they bought in a residential neighborhood that didn't allow short-term rentals.
Well, then that's the reason, that's what, kind of why I asked the question about the CUP requirement. Do we, that's an example of if you keep it as a CUP.
No, I agree with you.
That all those standards and it still gives the neighborhood, you know, an option.
Pretty much what you're doing is you're, in essence, you're changing the zoning a little bit. When you take the CUP out, you're modifying the zoning in there. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to short-term rentals.
Right.
I'm just saying that these neighborhoods are going to continue to be targeted because of the economics and we can take the CUP out and then you don't, I, I'm assuming if you take the CUP out, you don't have to have a public hearing, you don't have to post a notice, you could just wake up one day and have a short-term rental next door to you.
That's correct.
And I was going to double check, but, I mean, that's the disadvantage.
Yeah.
It's allowed by right, similar to the zoning districts that you have right now, that it's allowed by right. And right now, without a license or any other element, you're, you're correct, and someone can purchase a piece of property, turn it into a short-term rental in the by-right zone and move forward.
Oh, I, I do think we have to consider that you, you also can't pick out who your neighbor is regardless, I mean, it's still a free market as far as whoever. I mean, it's still a free market as far as whoever has the home next to you, that's your neighbor. Or if it's a rental long term, then that's your neighbor. I mean, we still, you know, have rights for the, the owners of the property that we're trying to balance too. And, and so I just want to keep, keep that in mind as well.
I think to the economics too, that Mike's talking about, I mean, you're talking about those neighborhoods. And a lot of the, the public hearings that we've, that we've listened to the, the residents in those areas is they're, they're worried that the house won't be kept up. Or, you know, we've heard an instance, well, this, this house is in shambles and it's been sold for, now we don't want it to be a short term rental. Well, that person's bought it and fixed it up. And so it's really increasing the values and playing devil's advocate in this. I mean, it's increasing the values of those properties, right? In those neighborhoods. We've heard about, well, we don't want everybody to park on the street. Well, long term rentals, they can park on the street. Residents can park on the street. Short term rentals, they can't. So I think there's a lot of rules in place that, that affect in a positive way in these neighborhoods. Now, densities, I, I think is, is an issue. And we don't want a housing shortage because of short term rentals that, that Fredericksburg running into. You know, so I, I, I think setting those, those distances might be a good way to do that. But also, we, I think we need to think too of what are the main complaints? And, and a lot of them get addressed by, by the rules that they are. And it's, it's a benefit. We've heard on many occasions that, that they're worried about, again, about the houses not being taken care of to where they're actually going to be some of the better houses in the neighborhood because you're not going to be able to rent a VRBO if it's not fixed up, it looks.
One of the, those are complaints, but if I go back over time on additional use permits we've considered in the public hearings, the biggest number one challenge the people have had is the trans latency of the, of the people that are in and out. The, the neighbors, there's not neighbors anymore. Again, I'm not advocating one way or another. I'm just telling you, this is what, this is what the neighborhood people. And I think, I think the, what you've said has really been addressed, the parking, the condition, because I think the homes definitely get improved and I think they get taken care of. I think it's just that in the neighborhoods, people bought in a neighborhood, liked to know their neighbors and understand what Kim is saying, but that's been the biggest complaint is that, you know, someone's there one week and they're not there the next week and somebody else is there. Not that that's a factor of whether you grant it or not, but that's the number one complaint people have had so far.
If we do away with the CUP, there's really no public
Nope.
knowledge of anybody knowing that this property is going to become an STR.
That's correct.
And I don't think that's good.
And neighbors will know, they'll see renovations, they'll see.
Don't you have posting requirements on the property?
But do they go away with the C, with?
We post for a public hearing, but I don't think you have to put on there. Yeah, I don't think.
Guest notification.
You guys don't post on the house that it's a, it's a, it's a short term rental, right?
No, we just, we tell the perimeter that we're required to.
Yeah, so the, for the CUP, we've added the guest notification. That's more internal to the property, so they're in their welcome packet.
Gotcha.
That would be part of.
Short term rental customer gets a notice, you're in the neighborhood, here's parking, here's trash, here's the local requirements.
But leading up to that, other than neighbors knowing this house is being renovated and the, the owners letting everybody know. There is, there's no public
No.
transparency of that.
That's correct. It would be allowed by right, no different than an owner, a homeowner, a long term renter and a short term renter would all be by right.
Yeah, and funny enough, you know, I, I've been asking whenever I have the opportunity, people, there was, there's someone that has recently moved to Kerrville that I know and I just asked, and she said, it's funny that you should ask. I used to actually have a home that was next to a short term rental and I loved it. The home was well kept, you know, it was quiet during the week, it was mostly during the weekend. There were never any problems. You know, we don't hear that side of the story when we're at council. We hear the people that are, you know, have fears that, because it hasn't happened yet, but what could happen? You know, so then we, we talked to the, the police and asked them for crime, crime or other calls that come from those and we find out there aren't any. I, I think personally, a lot of it is, is fear of the unknown. And I, but I understand that, that, that people want to have their neighbors. I certainly understand that. But I think a buffer zone also creates a way to prevent being surrounded in a neighborhood by, by short term rentals, personally.
I agree, I just think, again, you're going to wake up one day and you're next door, your, your house next door is going to be a short term rental. The buffer zone, I, I love the buffer zone idea because it limits the number in a certain neighborhood. I think that's a great idea, but.
I tend to look at the last two proposed options that are presented to us. I tend to look at those more and I'd like to go with that. Speaking towards the CUPs, I agree that we could go to a spot where we don't even need those anymore. And that gets a lot of the arbitrary stuff that P and Z has to deal with off of their plate. And then going back to the conversation that we're just having about the public notification, could we not put some type of provision in the ordinance that even if it's allowed by right to put up a sign thirty days before they, you know, open it up to the public for rentals and that kind of thing? I mean, I know we have that for CUPs, I don't know if it's thirty days, but if that's part of the concern, could we add that to it?
Roman, are you saying like on the licensing requirements, there would be notification requirements as well or?
Something like that, or if, like what we do, I think now the city actually puts a sign up. But if we want to have some, if that's a concern amongst us and the neighbors and in the community, adding some type of provision there where they have to go out or put some type of sign or something to let their neighbors know and the community know.
Would that solve the transparency issue for you if, if licensing requirements ever require to notify their neighbors?
I don't know, there's something about me that kind of hates to give up the CUP. I, I just feel like it's a, it's a, it's one way to let the public know. And this is such a public thing right now that I just, I don't know. I, I guess I'm looking at it as belt and suspenders.
We've also kind of taken the stance, I mean, I have as a council member that we can't, I don't feel, well, I can't, I'll speak for myself, can't arbitrarily deny it based on, on just feelings.
True, and I agree.
And that's what we've been doing.
And, and so, because that opens us up as, as a, as a city to, you know, be, you know, picking and choosing. And, and I don't, I don't want to go there, so. I mean, I think if, if, if we find all of the things as, that we feel comfortable with as a group that makes sense so that we don't have to, I mean, that's really what we get in a position of doing is picking and choosing. And I've just never felt like, I don't want to be that person that says, this is okay and this is not okay. And, and, and one of the things we always ask about is the distance. And so I think that answers our question.
If we did that, as far as city staff goes, are we putting more responsibility on you? Or is it cut and dried enough that you don't have to make some of the decisions that we've had to make?
I think that would make it more cut and dry, both for your staff and the customer. Because they can look at it, it's almost like a checklist. Do I meet the separation requirement? Am I in this zoning?
Do I have the parking?
Do I have the parking? And then, of course, some of the other stuff is just internal, but they can go through that and know that they have, have met all those requirements. Back to the notification of a business license, like a comparable notice would be, TABC requires businesses to notify if they're applying for an alcohol permit.
Yep.
So they'll post the property and they put an ad in the newspaper. The applicant is required to do that. And so that would be something comparable.
I think the.
The business is allowed, but they just have to notify the neighbors.
If you, if you put the licensing, licensing in and you put the buffer zone and you try to keep the CUP in, I think it's a fall, I think it's a false sense of possibility for someone that wants to come in and speak against it at a public hearing because we really have no way to turn it down. And I, I agree with you. You know, it's, it, it's a tough deal. I mean, it's just going to be a tough deal because you're going to have people that are going to be upset when they're going to wake up one day and find out they have a short term rental next door and they are going to have to learn that there is no process anymore. If it's a certain distance away, it meets all the licensing requirements, just like any business, it's there. And I, I mean, I don't know that posting a notice that, you know, this is, in thirty days, this is going to be conditional, this is going to be a short term rental. I, I, I don't know that that serves any purpose. I'm not sure, I'm not saying it doesn't, but at the end of the day, if we put a buffer in there and you have a licensing requirement in there, there is no reason for a conditional use permit hearing because they don't need it.
Yeah, I agree.
If we put it in there, we can't, we're not going to be able to turn it down.
Yeah, I agree, because, and the, the suggestion that I made was to try to alleviate some of the concerns that I've been hearing in discussion, so we don't necessarily have to do that. But no, I, I.
You're right, it's a catch twenty-two.
Right, yeah.
And I mean, the notice of
In this.
in the neighborhood is, is just.
Well, and the CUP serves a, you know, there are a couple of factors that go into that. There's the public notice, there's the conditions that they have to go through, they have to go through P and Z and city council. And we have to look at that and arbitrarily decide whether it goes there or not. And so, but what the process we're looking at right now is we're taking away the arbitrary decisions we're having to make, what the conditions are, because those will be codified most likely. So the only thing left that would be beneficial from the CUP is the public notice. And so if we want to keep that in, how are we going to do that? If not, we allow it by right, just like every other property that's, I don't have to put any notice in. And that might be the way to do it.
Okay, we've heard from this side of the room. How about this side of the room?
I've got one comment I'd like to add to what Michael said a little bit ago about how certainly when, on P and Z, we started seeing short term rentals in the, the lower priced neighborhoods. You know, it's easy to, to purchase and fix up and, and make a property out of. But, and it may or may not be a trend, but I know we're seeing, we, P and Z, houses in, shall I say, more affluent neighborhoods with swimming pools. And certainly, you know, if I had a situation like that, I could charge a heckle a lot more, make it a short term rental. So it, it's going to be, I think, perhaps in all areas, if it just keeps, if this fad keeps growing. And so we don't want to forget about, in fact, we had Mount Geelong when in River Hill.
Yeah, but it was a very small little
Yeah, that was, that was.
duplex type deal and it wasn't a $400,000 property. So, and, and again, that's just a, that's just an observation. I mean, it's just reality. That's where the short term rentals are going. If you go all over town and you look at where these short term rentals are, it's quite obvious ninety percent of them are in the little residential neighborhoods with the small homes and inexpensive homes where people have, most of the time, probably lived there for a pretty good while.
Right.
It's reality, we can't.
Can we pull up the map again? It, I think it's pretty evident on some of the clustering there, but it'll show you guys some of the dispersion really across the community.
True, is there any way on the, on the map, and I'm sure you would have to do this, but if you, if we set the buffer to two hundred feet, five hundred feet, a thousand feet, whatever, whatever that is, is your ability to go through there and say, okay, well, if we set it at five hundred feet, there will be a max of this many short term rentals that will be allowed in the city?
Well, yeah, and that's, that's my question is, I mean, what number are we looking at? What, what, what do we want to cap off our short term rentals at? What percentage or what number are we looking at? Because that kind of determines the buffer, whether it's a five hundred foot buffer or a thousand foot buffer. We need to know, you know, where we draw the line at how many we have in Kerrville.
Can we do that? I mean, I don't know reasonably we're going to be able to come up with something like that.
Especially with new homes being put in in the city limits.
Well, you could, you could do, you could extrapolate if you sat down with this new tool that you have and you put it, let's say, a five hundred feet or a thousand feet or whatever it is. I think you can go into these areas and you can, you can see what's eliminated now. But that's going to change because if someone does one in an area, then there's a new buffer.
Right.
So I don't know that you can.
See, I think, I think shortens, there may be a way to, to try to calculate that and see what, you know, how many five hundred foot buffers do you know fit in the city limits?
What's the saturation point?
Right.
I think market economics will kind of drive a saturation.
Yeah, so we really propose the buffer as really
Protection.
more of the adjacency issue and, and the, the overall within a neighborhood rather than a tool to try to get at an overall percentage. Because that's not, that's not the most effective for that.
I think, I think it's, the best thing we could possibly do is put a buffer. And I think that's, if we're going to continue to have the short term rentals in the neighborhoods and we're going to figure out a way where, like Kim says, we can't just, I don't think it's right there because of the houses or whatever. That's the best way to do it. And, and the best you can do is let people know that we're doing the best we can to protect the neighborhoods and you're not going to have five on a street, you're not going to have twenty in your neighborhood. You know, if you put, my preference would be a five hundred foot buffer at least, I'm not.
The two things I'll point out when we put the map up.
Would staff have a recommendation on buffer?
I think based on our average block length, that five hundred foot buffer starts to look more like one per block. And that eliminates the adjacent block in most cases on, you know, across the street or behind, behind that lot. A couple of things real quick to point out. As you can see, they are scattered all over town. There are some more dense areas in the center of town, of course, closer to the, the more business areas and amenity areas. Also, we have ninety-one on the map right now, including the pending cases that we have. What, fifty-four, is that right, Jacob?
Paying for them.
Paying this last quarter, last month?
Around sixty.
Sixty. So the, the last month's active occupancy tax payments. So they, they pay monthly through their occupancy tax. Last month, we had sixty payers. That means, including the pending, of course, thirty of these did not rent last month. So just because they or, or were rented long term, right? So just because they've received the conditional use permit or a business license, may not be a short term rental every weekend. Some of these we've seen in talking to some of the operators, they may rent for a month or two to someone coming in town long term, you know, a contract nurse or doctor, teacher looking to relocate, do some long term rental, month to month, and then go back to a short term rental. So I, I don't think it's going to be all of them are rented every weekend, daily turnover like you would anticipate.
But they could switch back and forth.
They could switch back and forth.
So there, I thought there was a stipulation about short term rentals. There was a maximum amount of time you could be there.
But then it gets considered as a long.
And then you have to move out.
No, the short term rental allows a rental less than thirty days.
Okay.
That does not prohibit them from renting.
So long term rentals don't.
Thirty days.
Okay.
But how, but you have no way of knowing
Payers.
other than their honesty with pain.
Our, our finance department does hire a company that scrapes through and, and they check all the bookings on all the major sites to see what the availability is and how much. And we, we could go through and audit each of them if needed to show this one was rented this, you know, available and used this many days. Here's what we estimate that you owe, or they're already doing it on their own.
So there's no difference between of the, of the payment made to the city, whether you rent it for a weekend or a month?
There is.
There is?
Yes, sir, so anything over thirty days is not taxable.
Right, that's how.
Anything over thirty days is not taxable.
That's correct, whether it's a hotel or a short term rental.
It's not taxable for hotel and motel occupancy taxes. It's still on the property tax roll.
Sure, sure.
So those hotel, and I'm going to be very clear, those hotel motel occupancy taxes are collected to basically market the community for heads and beds. So those fund things like the convention visitors bureau, that in no way goes to the city's general fund. Does that make sense?
And that's the same rule whether you're.
You do have to monitor.
Very closely, because they have to pay that, no different than La Quinta or Comfort Inn or anybody else. That's correct. So if I have, if I have a short term rental and I rent it two days every weekend, pay that occupancy tax for each of those days rented. I rent it for thirty days or sixty days, there is no occupancy tax paid for that rental because it is, exceeds that thirty day requirement.
Got you.
So just a quick note to this ninety-one count, again, that does include the pending applications that are before you. And this also includes properties that are in the one mile extraterritorial jurisdiction beyond the city limit line. There is no zoning in that area. And so no, no zoning considerations that you guys move forward will have any effect on any short term rentals that occur in the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Do they even have to come?
The only thing that they are required to do is to pay the hotel occupancy tax.
The only thing that they are required to do is to pay the hotel occupancy tax.
So they have to basically, they have to let the city know.
Correct. Correct.
Well, does that bring up a question of, let's say, we take in some property that has been in ETJ and there's been a short-term rental there, are they then grandfathered in?
Yes. It's pretty rare, though. There there are very few existing neighborhoods that are are able to be brought into the city limits going forward. It's really new construction that would likely be occurring.
Okay, we have about ten minutes that we could allow to the public. You guys have somebody to speak for you?
We have six people.
Six?
Yeah. So would you like two or three minutes?
Pardon?
Would you like two or three minutes per person?
Let's let's do two.
John Perrin.
I'll give my time to Robin.
Please state your name and address.
Robin Perrin, nine forty Jefferson. Um so I really appreciate you letting us speak a few minutes here. Um we do need to I don't know, I'm I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with, you know, long-term versus short-term rentals and and if you even if you've used Airbnb or VRBO or any of that. But we've been doing it for quite a few years now and we we do have some issues that we really need to talk with you all about um that you're saying here and we're all on the edge of our seats going, no, that's not right. So um we we would ask that we could do that and for my, I don't really know how this is supposed to work, but I don't think we're able to meet with you as a group, but maybe individually, or maybe you can help me with that.
Individually, you can and just, if you can, just give us the the basic facts.
Okay, um we're actually unclear of the negative issues that you guys are are uh coming up with because as far as we know, there's not legitimate complaints, there's just fears of things that are gonna happen. So we don't really know what the the actual problem is that you're trying to solve.
Well, I I can tell you that when when we when we do have a public hearing for a short-term rental in a neighborhood for people that bought their homes because it's a neighborhood and they have neighbors.
And I've seen all the people, yeah.
And so they they want their neighborhood protected and it's not against the short-term rental per se, it's not against the people that own it. But they are not happy about having every every week or two weeks a different person living in their the house next door to them. They have kids.
Because it's a it's a fear of something in the future that may may or may not.
You know, it changes, you you can you can dance around however you want, but it changes the character of the neighborhood. And when you change the character of someone that was able to buy a home and live in that house, you're changing the character of the neighborhood when you turn it into a rental market. So it's not about negatives, it's about, you know, this is what, I bought this house in this neighborhood, there wasn't short-term rentals allowed, there weren't transient and 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 that that's 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 really the, my perception is the only negative.
Yeah. So um I I think some of the perceptions are that it's all these out-of-town investors or whatever, but my family's been here for eighty-six years. You know, we, you know, my grandfather was superintendent, my other grandfather started the Daily Times, so it's um it's not just random people that are coming in and doing this. This, these are Kerrville hometown folk.
Well, and we understand that, so all right, can we uh, your two minutes are up, Robin, we need to.
Took so much of it, okay. Well, I I think there's some legal issues, there's all kinds of issues that that I I'd like to talk about, but um.
Well, and and contact us individually.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and y'all will all remember.
Pardon?
Yeah.
If other people wanna skip on speaking, so we don't.
That we don't do that.
We don't?
We don't?
They can they can decide to do that.
You can decide.
Who's next on the list?
Linda Stone.
Oh, I'll give you my time, Mr..
She just said they can't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
If they'll give you your time, we just need you to be exact, if you can, please.
There's a lot, density per street. Um we just feel like you're you're running into maybe some legal issues that you probably know more about, but um if for the the city attorney, I mean, the um let me let me get back to this, hold on a second. I have twelve pages, so we gotta go with it. There's a fundamental privilege of property ownership and this is um this is some legal issues I think you might be getting into when you say that one neighbor can have an SDR, but then the next-door neighbor can't. That was all that I wanted to say about that, but um I think one of your issues was to see where we actually are um categorized. And um I believe that you're talking about categorizing categorizing us as a business when the State Supreme Court in a twenty-eighteen case said that we're categorized as residences. So when we um are as a residence, then it opens a whole new can of worms as far as trying to regulate. Um but I think that goes back to the first point. If there's a a regulation, we kinda need to understand what's the impetus behind that and and where you feel like we're like we're going wrong, you know? There's a, there's just a lot of, you know, parking issues. Well, I've got a four-bedroom, three-bath house. You're saying that I can only have ten people in there, it sleeps fourteen. You know, we have issues like that. When I go to the city and I ask them if I can widen my driveway, they say no. So it's actually a grandfathered one, so it's not an issue right now, but um we, you know, we come into stuff like that. There's actually quite a few. I don't know if anybody else.
Well, what we're dealing with is is in a residential neighborhood, you do, in these in these residential neighborhood classifications, you do not have the right to have a short-term rental. That's not your right. You come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council, to request a conditional use permit to allow you to have it in there, which is what we're dealing with, and I think ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent of the time, we've approved these things with the conditions that the city's put on it.
Yeah.
But it's not like it's an infringement on your property rights, because when you buy a property in a R-one, R-two-zone neighborhood, you do not have the right to have a short-term rental.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the separation requirements? Is that what you were getting into about what we were just discussing?
Yeah, if you're talking about.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I get what you're saying, though, yeah. No, I agree with what you're saying. If the separation requirements, if we do that.
I feel like you're opening up yourself legally if you're saying a neighbor can can do it, but their next-door neighbor can't. But overall, if you did like a, you know, ten percent overall in the city, then as the city grows, then you can have more STRs.
Right, yeah.
So, all right, next.
Is there someone else?
Brian Weaver.
Her house?
Thank you for letting me speak. Um I'd just like to submit that short-term rentals really bring a great value to the Kerrville community. Uh our guests come here to really experience our our community and not just stay overnight or a couple of days and go do something else. Um they really get a chance to experience the culture that's here, the the neighborhoods, the people, and I think that's something that they don't experience when they stay at a one of the chain hotels here. Uh when we opened up our Airbnb about three and a half years ago or so, um there were seventy-one, I believe, uh short-term rentals at that time, the number that I saw. Today, there's ninety-one. I don't see this as being a huge exploding problem. Um we'll never have the same density uh issues that Fredericksburg has, just because we don't have a vibrant wine community. We don't have a restaurant culture the way they do, and they, we don't have the shopping that they do. So those are the primary reasons, I think, people choose Fredericksburg maybe as vacations. A lot of times, the overflow from Fredericksburg comes here and um I think that the other, the last thing I'd like to say is that our, the demographic of our guests um that show up here are very affluent people that are here to um to to experience this community. Maybe they go up to wine country, maybe they hang out at the river, whatever they do, but generally speaking, most of our guests, they wanna experience Kerrville. And um they're they're very nice people, they they aren't loud, they aren't noisy, they aren't uh negative to our neighborhood, I don't believe. Our neighborhood has a fairly high density of short-term rentals and and we just don't have that problem that that uh Mr. Segman Segerman here is explaining itself. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Sean Warner.
Okay.
Linda Bullard.
So I live in the same neighborhood as the previous speaker and I have long-term rentals. Um I I appreciate very much that the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission have, are in the process of delving into this topic by means of these workshops, which however, I should say, are really difficult to find out about. And it would be nice if you could make them, you know, information that you're having them more accessible. And um from the first speaker, I think that uh I learned it would also be great to have a public hearing, because even though it's really nice that you invite us to come and see you individually, this is obviously a complex issue which is affecting uh all the residents of Kerrville, some neighborhoods more than others. And to be able to hear uh and and discuss back and forth and see what different people think about it, it's much different than if I just come to you and say, these are my concerns. And therefore, I'd really, I really feel it would be um advisable to have a public hearing where we're not just stuck in on the end, but but the public is invited to comment on it and and uh figure into what your decisions are gonna be. So I previously addressed the Planning and Zoning Commission, basically on the density issue in my in my own neighborhood. And um but I also uh was concerned about some more general impacts that short-term rentals um may be having, and I was concerned in particular, for example, about the one that was being considered that night in which um which showed the problem, which is that an elderly um renter in that specific house had been evicted. Is that, is that my time?
Yes.
Oh, gosh. Well, okay, let me just say briefly that I support your point number three, which is uh it would just take all the ambiguity out. I know a lot of things will be grandfathered in. I also have some questions, but I feel like why we have zoning? It's because we ca- we we wanna protect the rights of residents who wanna live next to neighbors who are gonna be there next month. And not next to transients or restaurants or whatever. And so I feel that uh we have plenty of zones where there are uh where you have the right to have them, and if you just took away the CUPs, you wouldn't have to lose sleep at night. And I hope you'll have a public hearing so we can go.
That that's on the on the
Pop?
On the board now? It's showing where the public hearings are?
So you're suggesting a different type of public?
Is there gonna be a public hearing on this issue? Oh, yay.
There's multiples, yes.
Okay, well, thank.
The public hearing will be when city council is determining on the final thing.
Well, there's a P and Z also.
But I think the public hearing that you're suggesting is to for the citizens to provide input before we make a final decision.
Well, yeah.
Right, that's different than what we're doing.
Well, no, that's what a public hearing is.
Yeah, but just to just to clarify, so next steps would be, we would propose for uh staff to be able to take the input from today. Uh we do have a posted public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission on July seventh.
Yes, I know, perhaps you're talking about a town hall or something.
Based off that, we would have additional uh hearings uh from council in the August timeframe, a first and second reading of any ordinance changes that would be recommended by P and Z.
Right.
But is the July seventh just about specific applications?
It's about specific.
Okay, so that's not exactly, I was talking about the general issue.
You're looking at
A town hall.
A town hall.
That's at council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Not a bad idea.
I'd support a town hall, I think that'd be great.
I would too.
Me too.
Any other opinions on town hall?
You have it while I'm on vacation.
Any other speaker, Shelley?
No, sir.
That's it.
Okay. Find out. Uh, we can take town hall under consideration?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. At the will of of the body.
All right. Is that the consensus?
So we do have a, again, a posted public hearing
We do.
Uh on July seventh for Planning and Zoning Commission uh to to hear at least the zoning aspect uh of uh of the short-term rental issue.
Are you planning on coming back to us on July the seventh with some recommendations based off of what we talked about tonight as far as buffers and licensing and?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Business permits be discussed at that meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
No, business, no, zoning only.
Okay, so. Business permit is not related to zoning, that'll that'll be dictated based on what the zoning changes are. Can't establish the business rules if we don't have the zoning rules.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, we'll leave this, the July seventh meeting will be there and then we can, in the meantime, consider looking at a a public uh workshop.
Mm-hmm. Town hall.
Town hall. Yeah, thank you.
If that's the desire of the council, I would recommend that uh council bring it up at a council meeting and a future agenda item.
Okay.
So would we like to do a joint workshop? I'm just asking for P and Z, would y'all like to be included in that?
Well, I think we're talking about a town hall, a joint town hall, correct?
For P and Z council and all the public, yeah, okay.
So.
So can we, I was gonna say, on the agenda, we have possible action. Can we make a motion to just do that and have staff come up and organize the date between us?
Do we do it now, EA, or would it be better to do it at the end of the council meetings, recommended then?
I mean, it's so our move that we that we have a joint town hall between city council and P and Z.
The city manager suggested we do that at a council meeting, so.
At the end of the council meeting tonight.
He's looking or something.
Like, if you feel like we're posted for it.
Yeah.
Make that motion, all right. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Sooner than later.
All right. Workshop then, uh I'll have you guys do that for us then. All right, is there anything else from anybody before we adjourn?
Thank you.
All right, if this is at four, five oh six, we will adjourn this workshop. Thank you all for coming and I guess we'll see you all again.